Welcome, everyone. We'll call our meeting to order for this evening. Please let our audience show that all of councilors and attendants minus Councilwoman Martha Dalton is unable to attend. And the members of our staff and members over properly with us this evening as well say welcome. I'm glad to see you here. Want to hope that all of you did your duty and voted yes to any. Congratulations to all those who presented at polls and those who came out with a win. And we look forward to seeing what the next four years brings us, so. Anyway, we will move on from there. Item three is approval of the agenda for this evening.
I move the agenda to be accepted as presented. Counselor Smith will second that.
First, I would like to second it to approve the agenda. Any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item four is approval of the minutes from our committee of the full meeting of September twenty fourth.
Counselor Smith would move that we accept the minutes as presented. Second it.
Move then second it to approve the minutes from my committee of the whole meeting of September twenty fourth. Any question? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item five is conflict of interest deprecations. Anyone with this evening? Item six is correspondence. Six one is request for public forum on the wind farm.
That's really funny to me just to say, but there was a series of emails were exchanged in the last couple of weeks regarding requests by some citizens to have a public forum in part in part of Shore where in response to that, we gave issue to the athlete team. And he responded back to that, you know, so.
Item six two, illegal parking of public spaces.
So I shared that email, counsel, that is, it was a concern citizen who was noting that we have seen parking in Woodland Park and some other public areas in recent weeks. And that is an issue to me to post some of your, it's something that will need to be addressed.
Also want to share a letter that we received from the Heartland Culture on the Green. The Heartland Culture on the Green Show and Sale Committee would like to express our sincere thanks to the mayor and council, the town department for all your counsel support of this year's event. The time and effort you all gave were valuable and very much appreciated, and we could not have done it without you. Although the attendance was a bit smaller than we had hoped, we consider the twenty twenty first show a success and are already anticipating a bigger and better participation next year. Thank you again. We look forward to continuing to work together on future products, featured projects. So that was a great event. It's nice to see it come back and see where it can go from there in the future. Item seven is a newsletter report beginning with seven lines, serial number.
Right, so we touched on each and every one of these, but just continually include them that included in the master report. So in starting the annual staff reviews, if you're working with the process, you did a few, and then when it's suspended, I go to the back and complete your assignments and follow up on them. In HR, the town has published job ads to hire folkman custodian, part-time recreation assistance and a C A O. That job was posted on Friday and the other ones, we're just getting ready for the custodian and part-time assistance to start interviewing for those. And we would look to have those people in place just before or just later after perhaps the complex opens and the sort of hoping to pull it sometime. Right now, wind farm, which was on the, it's on the agenda as we got that email, we did publish to a website that F A Q by using the notice on the homepage. We haven't actually received a great deal of feedback directly on that. There had been some in trace book, they were usually normally continue to sort of launch it. I think there's even been a certain marginal issue in that F A Q. Still want the form, but it has gone public things there. Bylaw enforcement, we're continuing to work on about four cases. It is a slow process. And we have had James Parrish, our bylaw enforcement officer, probably something that may have no control on one particular case. Hope you twenty twenty five is notable that we will allow you to renegotiate a contract with the S P C A or hire someone like James to take care of it with control. So that is something that is a, that is a housekeeping item for the end of year. Bylaw development, I can't say, I'm leaving this, I left it in my report to say we're cognizant of it, but not quite so much work has been done, although there has been a little bit of work done around the stories here, volunteer recognition and citizen recognition more broadly. Notification system update, this may be something that Michelle has covered, but we have switched over to Simply Cast Notification. It's more economical, more robust in terms of feature set and time of life wise, so I think overall a very good change. East product for now, we had thought earlier that we may go forward with that for a lot of different reasons, that from budget to just funding and labor and looking at what we'll talk about later in our budget. That's no longer really something that the town is actively advocating for, so. It's certainly can be brought back to the table at this point. It's not scope by their budget or any sort of immediate implementation. D T I engagement, they have had a switch. It's now, I think about a month to two months old. The main person named the owner of the D T I has been, has left and replaced and it's still outstanding action, sort of trying to engage a D T I and take care of a couple of whole houses, again, items that need to be addressed. One of which would really be the guardrail work in St. Anthony, my foot cross in the grocery stores and more instant. We have two spots there that are filled down and that is something that either we'll have to address on or in time or they may come toward, but in any event, that's there. Emergency emergency planning, John on my girl has received temporary, started feeling like that that is an action though by any year to come and get our emergency plan updated. I think in that plan, there's a subset of information that is requires, what we've urgency planning part is about naming all the contact individuals, warming stations, sort of the key items of that plan, and so we're expecting to get that done before the year end.
We got to be tied in, go ahead, interrupt. The update in the emergency management plan, does that have any implications for notification system upgrade? Is that part of the plan?
I don't know if there's a direct tie. They are related to one of them in a general sense, of course, but I don't think the emergency. And I think there are almost certainly, although I haven't looked at template, there, I would think there'd be some reference to what notification system they're using in there.
Communication section of the plan.
Yeah.
How would you along with the prices? So would you be the introduction to Simply Cast?
And one thing we are talking about, which we were going to address later, is that with the launch of the complex, it does provide a very good opportunity to have a face-to-face interaction with most area resident and hardly an awful lot of them. At some point we do through that facility, so we had been planning, Michelle has sort of looked at purchasing simple business cards, which we could use. People could use to fill in their email to sign up for, and we're going to have some sort of, I don't think we've landed on exactly what motivator or incentive we will provide in a draw or something like that to get people to sign up, but as part of, you know, being at the front of having a table in the front and greeting people, that will be sort of a feature thing to sign up for notification system, so kind of a one-time special opportunity to take attention to that. An awful lot of folks, so that is one of the elements of the opening, what we're looking at.
Just one further question on that system, if I may. Do we have any idea percentage wise of how that system has been populated to date? If we have.
Very low. I think the number I recall, Michelle can add here, I think we had like two hundred odd people listed, so a very low percentage of the population. That would be by my rough count, five percent. So, yeah, and in my experience here, like other towns seem to have a similar sort of lower rate, it may not be five, but it's there aren't many with like eighty or ninety or something in their system, so that's why maybe being able to leverage or make use of the opening of the complex would be one way we get to work it out. And then interview with some other communications for your regular, like newsletter, like we have been already newsletter, we've already sort of tried to advertise that to locals, so it's one of those things that I think is, you know, it'll take time, you just, and it'll have to be pretty consistent or, you know, follow up a lot more, get better data. But, I mean, the water bills provides another opportunity, but then that's only on the department, et cetera, et cetera. You have to take many paths. Legal work, Langin, I have not received as of this week, but I'm supposed to at any time. I sort of copied the purchase and sale agreement that they've been working on with, for Rockham Hill property with Turner. The Orshur Cemetery Fund's in, we have completed the survey and we are looking plans and solve fence around it. As a time resource permitting. Why I say that it's not an excuse so much as right now, they're very heavy domains, which we'll probably talk about as we go through the next couple presentations on, you know, public works and everything really to just all hands on deck to sort of land the bird that is the complex, so. And we're running out of season a bit, so. It's still very much in the, you know, on the table and in plans, but we have about, from my calculation, about six to eight weeks to try and work something in. Website updates, this is a kind of a little under the radar until it suddenly pops up on people's computers and in their browsers, you won't know. But we are very, we're closer now and I don't know that we have a specific date yet, but I'd say within a few weeks. Town is in the final stages of switching from Allnet to Catalyst. Michelle has shared a preview with me. It's got some added functionality, just, I think, a very appealing layout. It'd be more user friendly and allows us to do a couple of things we can't do now with our current platform, so I think a very positive upgrade is in the works there and I think certainly I would expect before Christmas the layers go out and in place. I don't know how we promise, but.
They're doing a lot of them because they're moving so many hours, so we just, I just approved this morning or this afternoon, the layout and have to make a few tweaks. And so that then puts us in the queue for the next stage of it, so it just depends how many are ahead of us, but just working through it.
Yeah, and that's just as in one of what Michelle says, that Allnet was purchased by Catalyst, so Allnet was a smaller product. Catalyst, a larger, broader platform, and they're moving everyone to their parent platform, so I don't know whether the Allnet purchase is more about buying their subscribers than their technology, but maybe even Catalyst now owns Allnet and we're moving to that platform, but it is a, in my view, it's a really nice platform. And the Woodlot Management, I'll have to say, I didn't have my left phone here because it hasn't been mentioned by getting here and others. It's something we need to address and have not done that since, but it is something that's, is there in the future, so.
Can I offer a comment, Rob, just regarding that? Would it be prudent for us to establish someone to look at a plan? If we, you know, think about a park there or how we want it to be cut, would be helpful, maybe there was somebody looking at what we would cut, how we would cut it, so that there was a purpose behind.
I think again, ahead of ourselves, so the first step was recommended that we worked in partnership with the top inventory producers and so occasionally to do a management plan or at least explore what that would involve. So that's basically very one-time visit to spend for professional staff at the top inventory producers.
Thank you.
You want to have any questions for Leo?
One, if I may. With regards to item two, the part-time recreation assistance as well as the full-time custodian, you mentioned interviews attending. Who will be conducting those interviews?
My gentleman. I may vault you as well, but John and Jennifer.
Thank you.
On number eight, has there been any, maybe this might be in your report about the new signs going out on the Rockland Road? Is there any timeframe when that'll be?
He was busy with the welcome to, so he said, I haven't, I thought I would have him lay in.
Yep.
I spoke for today on, let's fly out and help you do that.
Okay.
So I suspect we'll see it shortly.
There's nothing more to do.
Yes, they are.
Hey, let's move on to our next report, and those are finance reports in the session to the topic.
So you would have all received your package, which is our financial information to date. Today being the end of September. In our general budget, we are still trending to an overall spare plus. And we are working towards including in our general budget, some of the opening costs for the complex, making sure that we've got some funds available still to make sure that our our project is open this year and we have some funds to get that open properly. As far as our water and sewer, we are still trending towards a deficit in that, and we've talked about what the biggest contributors are there with the credits that we had to issue and just an overall decrease in metered water so far. Our metered water, next metered water will be coming out the first of November. So we'll have a better idea of roughly where we are with that, and it normally is about a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar revenue to the town. So if that does happen, we could see that we are basically at even with our water and sewer. But a very tight budget for share at this time here. Operating reserves, we did in September, we did the transfers over that had been approved for the first half of the year, so we had done our first quarter earlier in the year. This is our second half. So those were actually transferred over into September, which gives us our total reserves in our general of about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, reserves in our water and sewer at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And our gas tax funding, we received our first payment from the province and we are now up to eighty-seven thousand dollars in our gas tax fund. Still trending on our overall unrestricted cash, about five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that has been building over time. And this basically does say that we are able to pay our bills on time and will continue to do so. That number does tend to fluctuate between, I mean, five, six hundred thousand dollars at any given time, so. Looking good there. We do want to continue to be able to do that for sure. You've also included a complex update. Under the complex update, we did get our official notice from the municipal borrowing board that our borrowing was approved. So this does bring our overall budget for the complex just slightly over thirteen million dollars at this point in time. We are in the final stages of bringing that lovely building home. So we're hoping to keep as close to that number as we can at this point in time, so, yeah. Moving forward with that, I also included a little summary just of funding today, just to give you an idea that so far things are rolling along as expected so far, so. But there are six weeks to go, and if you've ever built anything, you know, these are the stages that things can go a little sideways on you, but hopefully, hey, we're narrowing it, less than a million dollars to go, so we, the guys in talks.
Have you, have you done all of the, taken all the approaches you were going to, like, starting with the, the large donations and then, like, are you?
Okay, so at the fundraising point, so a couple of things that we are waiting on, we just get, one's got closer today. We do have a sample for our memory board, which is huge for bringing donors in at the ten thousand dollar level. Somebody that may have contributed five thousand so far can contribute by more and get on our memory wall. So this is huge. We're going to have samples out soon. And then our donor hall, they're in the process of getting a mock-up. There will be spaces available. We're hoping to have, I was talking to the designer and she was hoping to have it for last week, but again, we've been pushing her in all directions at this point. So hopefully we will have that out this week and then we can show people just a sample of where we are next with our donations. So we continue to send our salad lecher plants, got another chap from Friends of Harlem for five thousand dollars this week for donor plants, so they're still available, all good. Still lots of opportunity if anybody wants to.
Everyone must have these thoughts.
For sure. The other thing that was included in your package, I had done this about this time last year, was just a summary of where we are in our recreation revenues. Little trend year over year, just looking at some differences. And if there were any questions on that between myself and John, you know, try to answer any questions that you may have. I guess for the records, we are trending upward in our recreation revenues for sure. Two thousand, for two thousand and twenty-three, we had fifty-two thousand dollars. We had budgeted about the same for twenty twenty-four and year to date, we're at six, almost sixty-two thousand dollars. So we're about ten thousand dollars over in our revenue, which definitely helps us with any additional costs that are coming our way related to our our overall recreation program.
What would that be attributed to, the extra ten? Was this like more ball field rentals?
We actually, big thing, of course, was the, the ball, and maybe I'll let John speak to it for sure, but the ball fields, ice rentals, those are definitely up. And just overall programs, because Sean and Dana are definitely trying all kinds of new things and some of them definitely work out, some of them not so much, but hey, overall, we are about five thousand dollars up this year in our other programs, not our major programs. One other note I will say is our advertising for our new complex has definitely brought in some new advertisers, some new funding dollars there. So again, that all helps to fund our overall recreation costs.
Should put your board side of the gene. As I look at you all, good, are you? Four sides is going well, like, pretty complicated, a lot of new interest from businesses and organizations and we're all the score.
That's great.
And then your names.
Yeah, they do. The ones I see in the pictures.
Hey, thank you. Item seven three is Communications and Development Report with Michelle Kay.
Okay, I'll give you a few of the highlights from my report. We did partner with Hartland Helpers to be a non-perishable goods drop-off location for their room stick group hop-off parade, which was formerly known as the Witch's Walk. So that took place this past Saturday, so we made a bin available for items to be dropped off leading up to their event, and Jennifer dropped that off to them last night, so we did have a nice big box full of things, so that was great to see.
Very, very well attended as well.
Yes.
So it's got the pictures online. There was, sounds like there was lots of. Great looking costume.
Yes.
I heard it was over a hundred.
Oh, really?
Well, I was talking to Alicia.
They're close to a hundred, for sure, yeah. It's like a good size, pretty much.
The Western Valley Regional Service Commission is recruiting for volunteer drivers for their urban rural rides community transportation program. So they normally, pardon me, they currently are able to transport people to hospital appointments, but they would need more volunteers to be able to expand their service to include other appointments. So interested volunteers can visit www.urbanrurorides.ca for more information on that. And we did share a post on Facebook as well to try and help them get some more of those volunteers. The Upper River Valley Hospital is launching a new patient-centered volunteer program called Meal Mates. Volunteers with assist inpatients with their meal process by setting up the food tray, opening packages and containers and providing socialization and encouragement to eat. This program is piloted at the Dr. Everett Chalmers Regional Hospital with seventy-four percent of the patients involved either maintaining or increasing their food intake. The Upper River Valley Hospital is the second site within the Horizon Network to offer this program. And it would operate daily from four thirty to six thirty P M, so there is contact information there. Shelley Hubbard is the person to get in contact with, and again, we did post that to Facebook as well, that I wanted to get a fun in at this meeting for it as well. We've added a frequently asked questions section to the bylaw and policy page to answer some common questions that we get. And we'll also use some of those topics in the new Town Talks Bylaw Edition that we do post on the Facebook page as well. So I do provide the link to council if you want to check that out. And if council are getting questions, common questions, whether it's about bylaws or anything, feel free to pass those along and we'll do our best to get answers and have them added into the frequently asked questions section. For grants and funding, the waterfront project, APOLIS have advised that the pavilion park upgrades will not be eligible under their programs. But they do feel that the waterfront access, longest covered bridge in the world, curb appeal, and some of the visitor information upgrades, visitor information center upgrades are a fit. So we, my report does say that they're awaiting feedback, so we've actually had that meeting with them and Tourism Heritage Culture confirmed that it does fit very well with their, with their priorities and they felt that we did a good job on that. So they have mentioned some other things that we could add, some other considerations for feedback from groups or organizations and folks within tourism heritage culture. So that was certainly no problem, so at this point we are just waiting for them to, for APOLIS and R D C to provide the applications and then we'll be able to move forward with that. Probably next, the pre-construction and infrastructure, that one. Council had already approved that application in partnership with Belter, but R D C asked us to split that application up, so that's been taken care of. It's basically the same thing, it's just part of it's a hundred percent in our name now, but the same, the same program, the same thing that we're asking for. So that was for the arena demolition and for the municipal infrastructure that would be required for the Belter project. Then I applied to the Heart and Stroke Foundation's A E D subsidy program. And so that is for a new A E D cabinet signage and accessories, so that's your artificial, I don't know if the E is defibrillator. The letter escapes me, but anyway, so the, that would be used at the new community complex, so we did submit that. We'll see how that goes. I'm also looking into an option for a generator for a warming and cooling center. And I'm working my way through that and checking to see if I can get a quote on something that could potentially be used, like one generator shared between two locations so that we can spread it out within the municipality to get more coverage in case of an emergency. And under planning and development, there was one building and development permit issued in the month of September totaling sixteen thousand dollars in construction value. So I thought we were going to be hitting five million this month, but we're a little shy still at four million nine hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. However, as a comparison, in twenty twenty-three, for the entire year, Hartland's total was two point nine million dollars. That didn't include the community complex, but we are two million ahead of that already and we still have a few months to go, so. So it looks, it's, it's looking great, really. Then the wayfinding and welcome to signs were mentioned. They are starting to go up. They're looking great. There are, there's still more signs to go. Um, there are, there's still more signs to go. Um, Jed is working with N B Power to locate the underground wires before some of the bases can be installed for, for the posts in the downtown area. Um, and yeah, so there's, there's still more to come, but you're starting to see them pop up. So that's great. And I did give some more information there on the ACOA R D C one. Um, I touched on most of that already. They do feel even once we get the application, get it filled out. Um, ACOA estimates it to take two to two and a half months after we submit our application. Um, so it's a slow process, but if we can get the funding, it'll all be worth it. So I know I did skip over a bunch of things, but if council has any questions on the items that I highlighted or any other things, um. Available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have seven four, our recreation report with John Megron.
With the council. So um, we begin with current events. The uh, Stokoe and Sullivan podcast is our weekly Heartland Recreation Podcast, recreation updates and uh. Upcoming events, um, in discussion. Dearship has been positive and um, guest speakers will be scheduled for future podcasts. Likely when we get into the new arena, there's more space for, for guests and so on. Um, but the recordings are posted to YouTube and Facebook, so if anyone is, is interested in uh, checking that, please feel free to do so.
They, they are open for guests.
They are, and they are, the table's open for guests, yeah, so. We might, we might start handily selecting and see, see how that goes. Um, the Hartland Farmers Market has concluded for the season. Uh, it was a great season. The last official market was on the fifth of October, uh, due to the camp and weather cancellation had on the twelfth, but uh, overall was um. Well received by the Heartland residents and tourists. And um, the market coordinator is planning a special presentation to council on the twenty twenty-four year. Uh, the season and uh, looking forward to twenty twenty-five for November, sorry, uh, in the coming year. Uh, upcoming events, uh, onto trail is scheduled for this uh, this Saturday, October twenty-sixth. The younger kids will be uh, coming up for dark to do trail and the older kids will be uh, will be scheduled for after. Um, decorating is, decorating is ongoing now. And uh, three bags will be provided by our recreation department. Being night at the Triple C, October twenty-ninth, four games, cars, uh, and so on.
Done, Tanner?
Yes.
The hard trail is at, I bet, the same place it's always been?
Yes.
Which is where exactly for those who haven't been before?
Is at the um, the Ball Gardens. And uh, pickleball starts October twenty-seventh at the communities, so we are beginning that, um, at the school coming end of October. Um.
Question.
Yes.
For those that don't have paddles, there, there can be any of it.
We do have some paddles. We actually just recently bought some more, so anytime any of our equipment gets damaged or is, say, heavily used, we, we like to locate them out.
In what time does pickleball start? Maybe you said that, wasn't it?
Uh, no, I don't have a time today, but it's October twenty-seventh. I may be posting on the recreation page and the D I communicated.
Thank you.
And then um. As regards to community complex, Quad C planning. So um, as I've stated in uh, previous reports, the weekly article is filling up nicely. Uh, with town run programs and organizational uh, bookings, um, new landscape program is starting November eighteenth. Um, having a really good meeting today with uh, couch therapeutics from Woodstock, uh, looking at renting uh, fitness or community rooms to expand their services in the Heartland. And uh, they're very excited to, to be doing that. Um, so that was, it was a good meeting and looking forward to announcing that idea closer to the um, the public open. Um, play, explore, learn and thrive is a new program that the recreation, recreation department is working on. Uh, allowing power to children to discover their full potential through physical play. Um, it's divided into four age groups, uh, with special activities for each shows, target age groups. Um, and that, we'll be releasing more information on that program as we're getting to the new facility. Same with the tabletop spot, uh, weekly event focusing on a variety of board and tabletop games and community or opening facility. So that'll be a regular weekly event as well. Later on in the evening, we'll be discussing the public opening plan for the Quad C. Uh, it's hard to believe, but uh, Christmas twenty twenty-five planning, uh, Christmas event planning is already begun. And uh, we are organizing a joint venture with um, local churches for carols and the pavilion and uh. Uh, tree lighting ceremonies incorporated with that, um, it's in the planning phase, but it's something we are working on and um. Organizing a Christmas movie night, uh, accompanied by a skate in the community complex around the Christmas season. And as uh, Siri Webber mentioned, uh, we have posted four new um, recreation positions. And wanting to find historians and products. Any questions?
I've written the paper.
I think you should vote, cancel waiting on the ice.
Exactly.
We should vote, cancel waiting on the ice.
I don't think so.
If I go for a skate.
What if I roll the red card?
Uh, yes, a carpet would be helpful.
You sit in the chair, wait, and all stay around behind you.
No, only if pillows are available.
Oh, good one. Uh, we will move on to our public works report, which I have.
We may, and the council, my report's pretty short this week, because most of our uh. Efforts have been focused at the complex. We want that be. Well, we're trying to tie up the loose ends that are falling to the cracks. Uh, a lot of things, they're on, uh, moving. Moving things around, keeping that behind folks so they can stay working at their respective trades to keep their.
You will. Pretty with the other thing.
So, uh, water and sewer, uh, it's a very uneventful month. Uh, transportation, uh, we did fix a lot of, I think we did fix a lot of shoulders, the long roads. The off-road, industrial drive and main street. Uh, missing from this report too for transportation is the coordination that I had with. Look at the graphics and A and B design for uh. The placements of the welcome to and, and all various other wayfinding signs that we've, that you've probably seen up. Does anyone have any questions?
Give it up.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven six is the fire report that is improving the chances of this burn. What's that? Yes, uh, we do have with us this evening from the fire department, uh, Roy Reed. And Roy, did you have anything you want to share with us this evening?
Four, that's one couple.
Okay.
I'll just.
We're happy you could join us, so thank you. Anyone have any questions for the reports?
Wonder if Amanda was all for real when she get to be her. Was the Department of Trans- oh, no, under the type that says forest breath fire. It says named Department of Transportation. Does that mean? A? Just. Good morning.
I want to say thank you for all the reports and all the work the two guys do. It's a lot and uh, you're doing really well at this and uh, thank you for all of you.
Thank you very much. Item eight, we move into our regular business and item eight one is the second problem, new complex project status.
So uh, I'll be probably uh, passing on shoulder to fellow folks in the room and staff for a couple of these, but obviously uh, could bypass and sound. Maybe I mentioned again a couple of things that have been discussed earlier. Uh, cost and budget, um, as Tina said, our budget is just north of thirteen right now. There's a lot of moving pieces, both in revenue side, we've heard about your sort of pending uh, donations. Of course, we don't know exactly what that will contribute. There's a couple of other sources of funding which are sort of pending. And on the expense side, uh, we will, it is likely that it will be north of thirteen and somewhere in thirteen to thirteen two range by the end of the project. And uh, I was saying to uh, Treasurer today that one thing that probably would be a good cap in the end of this project is that. Um, my former, like, things to call Phoenix sessions, there's rising from the ashes, you would have an obsession at the end where you sort of looked at the project, how was managed? Uh, things you learned, things you discovered, the things you might be differently the next time, things you do the same next time. And that would be, I think, wise in this case. So there's a whole lot of factors that sort of uh, led to, led to the design we've gotten. Not all of them negative and we're positive, we have positive development as well as negative. Uh, but in any event, there's, there are a lot of moving parts to this project. A borrowing payment that Treasurer already spoke to, engagement center, and as you mentioned before, and I'll mention again. Uh, we have an agreement with um, indigenous movement to spend approximately ten thousand dollars on art. Um, that art will be commissioned this year, it won't be uh, uh, in place until next, the, the, the art is that it will take a number of months to complete the work. So uh, that is probably a operating slash capital spend that will be, I mean, I do have it in the budget. I shouldn't say high, but we sort of have it pegged in the budget for next year, not this year. Terms of schedule, we're still looking at opening day of Friday, November fifteenth. Uh, that said, I'm gonna jump down to two, see if you're following along in the presentation. Um. The largest hurdle we have to, to making that date is to conclude the um, fire marshal inspection, but first the fire pump inspection. So we had a test last week in which they were like three, they were kind of doing, uh, getting three scores, uh, we passed two and did not pass one. Uh, so uh, since that time, um, Jed, uh, our engineers, uh, some of our contractors and others have been looking at that. Um, it is, uh, to be clear, cause for concern, uh, I mean, people who are as concerned as not panic. Um, this is something that happens and I'm working with the fire marshal to make sure, work with to do what we can. To make sure that, you know, we, you know, do that inspection or fire pump test again, that it'll pass. So there is a test taking place tomorrow and with the reviewing. Uh, it gets into technical matters about the equipment they use, the calibration of that equipment, the gauges they use, the who did the test. We have one person do a test one more, another person do a second time. Um, without drilling down on all of that, um. We're really wa- waiting, anxious to see what the results are tomorrow and that'll decide an awful lot about what our shot is go forward. So. Uh, in any event, and there are other options about, you know, what allowances the fire marshal may or may not make in this circumstance to let us open. With a substandard test score, but in any event, um. This is a very active uh, issue and we're working on putting a lot of our attention toward. And uh, we're hopeful that uh, we'll resolve this, um, and it won't interfere with our opening on the fifteenth. Uh, site work, uh, is nearing the end, uh, we're sort of, there's some, for those who've looked at the building lately, there's. Some exterior work, especially the front facade, there's a still standing, there's still some uh, grain landscaping and so forth. We put in the rock and that kind of thing by the concrete, so, uh, but it's like all things, we're very close to our opening, so. It is getting done. Uh, system integration testing has been ongoing. Jed's been deeply involved in a lot of this. Uh, John as well, fitting in the system. And there's lots more that to come in the next three to four weeks as we head toward the open. And then leach insulation, I believe, the bathroom, um. So um, we've got the, both the slats, one the wood slats, one the base as well as the back seam and you can see that as you go up. Ice installation will be started on the twenty-first, it's ongoing. I think ice will be in probably in about two to three weeks, is that right?
I mean.
Yes, sorry.
Everything, but uh, the plan's fired up yesterday, uh. Everything is going well. We're down to thirty-four degrees today. They're gonna start dropping tomorrow. We got word today, excuse me, that we could possibly start building ice as soon as next week.
No, it's.
Uh, and, and we will be, we will be on that as soon as we began to get us from buffer. Uh, in, you know, in case of any issues.
Obviously, the floor is all cleaned up.
Yes, yes. I hope everything's been cleared off the floor and, and, and cleaned up.
Leeches are all in there, aren't they?
Leeches are all.
They look good.
The painters were finishing up, talking, talking. The painters were finishing up their last few things out in probably from another cold period uh, today. So I, I'm not a hundred percent, you know, they did finish. But uh, yeah, um, the update I have on painters, I guess I was there, uh, later into the evening, but uh. They were finishing up the um, yellow safety straps for the leach area and all the handrails and all black um. Steel where, in, in the leach area, its whole area, and it's uh, it's looking pretty slick.
So there's been a lot of changes since we had our last tour and.
Absolutely, I've scheduled my tour.
When?
So I can tell, yeah.
Uh, food licensing, I think, uh, John has been working on and, and teaming and we had the license in place for the canteen.
Correct, yeah, so on, on.
Yes.
The uh, food licensing, um, it's ongoing. Um, one of the last steps for the canteen is obviously we. Um, the site is by the health inspector, that can be completed with all the equipments in place. Um, after that, I had everything in place for the kitchenette and the community room. But the same thing, it's, am I ever getting all the um appliances and it has to look like a, a kitchen or a canteen before they come, right? So the paperwork's up.
And for those who, that issue has been resolved in a pretty favorable way. We've found an alternative supplier and the arrangement we've made is that it won't end up uh, ending in that cost over what it originally.
So chances of getting a hot dog on the fifteenth are looking good.
There are, and you'd have to consult the actual operator, but I, I believe that'll be the only relatively safe feature of most menus. Who will be the operator? Uh, I shouldn't.
Husky's girl.
Husky.
The operators that we had, uh, for the end of the um, the older.
The uh, the brief explanation for that is at first, uh, our contract with them extends through the end of hockey season, so we'll be back at this in March or April, I guess. Um, we went with sort of path of least resistance and the best known thing is that we, they had worked at the last arena. And we decided just keep things simple and extend their stay. It went well. Uh, but long term, uh, their build, build, their availability and other factors may mean that we. Uh, the town will look a bit tender and, and go in the direction, but at least until March, Husky will be girl, same as before. Uh, B O S implementation, John and or, I should say, yeah, I say John and or, any notes on, you were still planning on having that uh, available, okay?
Yes, yes, I was full of that. Um, again, just waiting on, uh, bringing in defining with it and set things up on our end for office space and staffing. But uh, I'll be, the financing stuff is in place.
Well, the B O S, I'm trying to say. Final sales system, yeah, it is, you just think of any uh. And recurring, that you've gone on to.
For the record, it is, it is probably available.
Yeah, so we're using any.
Yeah.
We're using.
Able to use it now.
Yes.
That was.
That was fall on face or dice. Um. Treasure Palpeys address fundraising, I will uh, bore that. Opening plans and the promotion staffing, I, I have thought about um, discussing this in the uh, in the budget section, but we're not gonna do that. I may uh, do that now, you know, and uh. I don't want to get too uh, detailed on this, perhaps, that is always a danger. But um, and of course. All right, so for those listening, I'd be referring to a, a spreadsheet that may not be directly visible, but. What, if you're, for an explanation of why the three attendants, why the full-time custodian? So you may know that we have a custodian we hired earlier this year. The plan is to have that person be a fifty-fifty person and be half custodial, half public works, or at least have some flexibility around that scheduling. And so what we've done here is that we've taken the weekdays, the first, the, and I'm. It's hard to lay the set in a PowerPoint with the attempt that we have, nevertheless, on the left, we have a, a plan for that runs from seven to mid.
Season, so uh, thinking of the hockey season, if you will, the winter season, and on the right, we have Saturday, Sunday. And what we're looking for, and I won't go too much detail here, but um, if you look at the uh, director, and that would be John, and the rec people would be Sean and Dana. These two, um, we are looking at having them have flexible schedules, because if we have people wanting to go in and use the walking track, let's say seven, someone obviously has to be in the arena open. And the way we accomplish that is uh, by having flexible schedules. So it wouldn't be the director every time showing up seven, one week it might be the first rec person, one week. It wouldn't be the director every time showing up seven, one week it might be the first rec person, one week it might be the second rec person. The point is with that set of three people, we can cover.
As the schedule on any given week that fits. The second uh set of folks here, that's the custodial, so don't think of a person, one person. Think of, we need custodial services Monday to Friday in the arena, when we're estimating five hours, and you'd say, why five hours? Uh just to do the walking track is probably, we don't know yet for sure, but we're thinking it's a two to three to four hour event depending on the sip, you know. Situations over, and then there's supplemental things they'll have to do, which will be covered perhaps by maintenance or recreation maintenance, which is the next uh resource over. So custodial work will only be done by the custodian, but the custodian will be the primary first person. Will be looking after uh the walking track in particular and then other bigs, I'll call it big stuff, it isn't necessarily physically big. But uh big ticket custodial items. And then, so we have that going today because. In a lot of cases, it could be that this will be some mornings, but. Uh in most cases, uh the games late at night do not have attend, do not have people watching, they're really player-only games, if you will, are primarily player-only. In which case, at that time, it makes the most sense to do the walking track and do that five. The the orange bars that are having the middle is because that custodian is not only at the complex, they're also at. Uh they're doing the rest of the facilities, town hall, the one we're sitting in now included. So what this means is if you look at, there's five hours there, there's eight hours in the workday. Five of the hours will be at the complex, three of them will be at every other building, so in other words, twenty five hours a week at the complex. Uh fifteen hours at the other buildings. Now again, uh situations will dictate if we have special events here, if they have special events there. Uh this is an outline or a general estimate of and plan of what we will need to cover. And the attendance, or if you can imagine, if someone's on the Z and Boney, if we have someone in there in the Z and Boney, we have something. We need someone to be able to attend to whatever issue that someone might have, whether that could be everything from ticketing and support to getting help with something in the community room. And whatever, so the idea is to have part-time people uh available, uh working, you know, in four-hour shifts through the weekdays. Uh and that's where the three come in, and you can kind of sell, talk to the bottom, which kind of translates the top total requirements. Into hours and people on the bottom table. On the weekends, which does get cut off in an unfortunate way, I think it's the fault of the projector, not the. No, that's not true, it shows that way on my screen, sorry. So in any event, uh what you can kind of just see there is that the custodial shifts to working in the mornings. That's not gonna be the same custodian, that's the person and a half I spoke about a minute ago. It's gonna be a different person, it'll be one person who may work from Tuesday to Saturday. Monday to Friday, uh Sunday to Thursday. Again, that'll be a week by week that John will manage, John, the custodians will be reporting to John. And uh they'll be, they'll be basically, you know, setting their schedules week by week, but this general strategy in mind. But uh you know, adjusting to whatever the the events are that week. So custodians on the weekends, it makes more sense that they would do that walking track and what uh earlier. Uh because at nights, you can expect it will not be possible to do three or four hours of the walking track, you have to have people working for two or three in the morning. Or uh you'll be trying to do it while people are coming in and out, which wouldn't make any sense if they're watching games on Friday and Saturday night, if you have turns and like. But all that said, this is all not speculative here, but it's based on assumptions that could change in practice, so. Uh but nevertheless, what we estimate is there needs to be four hours roughly on a Saturday and Sunday for custodial work. Then the maintenance work, which again will be a combination of running the Amboni, it'll be cleaning up rooms, doing some custodial work. Looking after the systems, refrigeration systems, checking them, make sure they're working properly, heat is set right, you know, ice temperature right, et cetera. That's what those hours are estimating there per day, something I think now I'm struggling not to go with the glasses again, I think that's fifteen I've got in there. And the attendance we've got, and that works out from one o'clock till uh eleven. On the, on on Saturday, Friday and Saturday night, so um in any event, um. Those are the hours, and when you take those and you translate them to the bottom uh chart, with that kind is where you can. You can start to fill the names against each of those people, but again, if we look at uh, you know, uh rec coordinator one and two and the director, that's. That would be effectively John, Sean and Dana. If we look at rec maintenance, we're looking in combination there of uh already Jimmy is working in that zone. I won't go through the names here in council, probably meaning that we have three people sort of paid for those roles. Then you get to the custodian, and if you look on the fire right, you're looking there at twenty four hours for that custodian, this is complex only. To be in the complex, that's where I asked that, the other fifteen again will be at the other building throughout the week. But of course, if you have those hours, you can't, someone can't work, no one works seven days a week. So you'll need to supplement or augment that with a secondary person who can work those other two days and work those four or five hours to look after things, so that's the strategy there. And the attendance, you can see, if you look over far right, you're looking at thirteen, fourteen hours per person, that's sort of a normal conventional part-time shift. Those could be students, they could be seniors, they could be anyone who is able to work flexible hours and and fill in and do this sort of work, so. Uh and you need three people just for that, maybe it's four uh in practice, I mean, I don't think it's two, because two doesn't give you sufficient buffer. If uh you hire students, they have exams, they get ill, uh they have, you know, they go to school events and so forth. So you need a bench of people from which you can uh pull your resources and make sure that folks are available to perform this work. Uh so this just points toward the overall strategy, so when we talked earlier and in the budget and what we're doing, you know. This explains the, at least we'll call it the starting or initial strategy for staffing, for hiring a new. Uh full-time custodian and looking to hire three part-time attendants who do more flexible hours. And then ou- outside that, there really are, now there is some work that we've kind of worked out between John and Jed and their respective teams. As to have some of the, you know, maintenance people and, you know, we traditionally had like, we've had people working at the pool and on the Z and Boney. And people, and certain people work for the camp, so those are all discussions we've had internally, and we believe we have at least a good starting position to take care of this. But uh to be clear, as we actually live with and experience uh looking after the arena. Uh things might change, and then you you make those adjustments, but at least out of the gate, I believe this is a pretty sound and sensible plan in terms of staffing.
So right as it stands now, the new complex will be open seven to midnight, seven days a week?
Uh I just noticed that uh just, I'm just gonna stop here for a moment while I fix the technical issue, I was told the owl has shut off. Is that, is that powered? If the owl has shut off, we're still being, I think the audio is being reported, but it doesn't look like it's.
Is there a power button here?
Therem Union? Um let me just check the.
I didn't touch anything, I was just wondering if it's.
You know, fire marshal wouldn't approve this setup, I just want to. Yeah, it might even when I shared the whole screen, I thought it was not the issue I was. I think unfortunately, I wonder if I had shared the whole screen, there might be something which it takes over the uh. Alright, well, for those uh watching at home or following along, maybe they didn't know. Ininsplorable uh uh alteration of proceedings, but uh we believe we're doing all of that. But anyhow, uh that's so, that's my uh, I don't know if there are any questions on that plan, but I just wanted to hear. And really, just for the confidence of council, that um this wasn't an arbitrary decision on the expert custodian, the three attendings, that was. Part of a sort of calculation of what we would need to start it and hopefully that will work.
Council will answer your question, so reasoning for sort of seven to midnight and um. Seven o'clock we for um, point we uh I guess, starting up and cleaning India, having the walking track open early. Um on a weekly basis, due, there's been a lot of requests. Interesting that.
That's what I was asking for, yeah, people have asked me.
Yes, so um myself and the coordinators are gonna be coming in earlier on a alternating basis to open facilities. People come in and walk in and um and then in general, operations and everything will be basically eight or eight o'clock. But it's exclusively more for people coming to use the walking track uh early, and then in the evening, um similar to the the old arena. Everyone's basically out of off the ice by eleven and midway after, right? So let's just give, you know, the guys a little bit of time to, you know, get a kind of thing uh for the night, but then speaking, everyone's off the ice and uh. No bookings would be after, you know, kind of off, basically.
So if there's no ice booked, does that mean that the complex would be closing at different times, like? Like, say there's a nine forty five or a eight thirty slot, and then there's nothing booked after that? Now with the old place, the arena would usually shut down when the ice is over. But if we have people that are coming in, I guess, a lot of people have just been asking me what the hours for the walking track are gonna be, so that's kind of.
The the best answer to that, given the nature of the walking track, the hours for the walking track, or it's just, as long as there's, as long as the doors are open. And I say that because you walk to the walking track to get to the bleachers, so if there's a game going on, like like, you know, at eight o'clock. You can, you'll be able to walk the walking track. The actual rooms and community room and fitness room, I mean, don't worry. There won't be any scheduled rentals or anything beyond um eight o'clock. But in terms of the walking track, there is an old area, the bleachers, that'll be right till eleven.
Thank you. Uh so moving on from staffing, communications and announcements will be uh Michelle sort of captaining that effort. Um it's tied very much as you would could imagine to our plans for opening. Um pre-opening tours, we have thoughts of that, I don't really have specific plans even with very near. We can speak to right now, but we don't have dates and things scheduled for uh for special, but uh the idea is certainly that. Uh whether you're not just members of council, uh contributors, donors, that we may arrange uh. Before we officially open on the fifteenth uh tours uh to have them in, you can see his facility early, if you will. Uh but that is still a work in progress, so I was giving up fine details there and there. Uh grand opening plan, uh at the risk of, I'm going to try and open this again, I'll have John speak to the grand opening plan, here's a presentation. There, and I'll just leave that, so hopefully the hours, I it's, it didn't seem to stop recording, just the, the video goes, so. You know, for those, that's the all.
Uh so um so the gra- the grand opening. For the complex, the the facility is what is is going to be in twenty twenty five, we're gonna have larger events, you know, it's gonna be. Bigger and better.
I'll I'll just stop here to say, I I I sometimes mix those words, I keep on on grand opening, public opening, I was referring to public opening, which is the first one. The grand opening, the uh, the, you know, is is next year, he says, so, yeah, was that, was my uh miss uh.
So the the public opening is currently scheduled for basically the weekend of the fifteenth, Friday, November fifteenth. And uh Saturday, November sixteenth for scheduled events and and so on. Six to six P M to ten P M for Friday and uh all day Saturday, and then on Friday. Uh we have our open house from six P M to seven thirty, uh facility tours in that time, to tours, general tours to be given by uh by staff. Uh recreation program offerings to be um kind of laid out and uh visible, I guess.
What, what I just mentioned quickly, what we've talked about in some of this, like this is a real-time sort of planning, so. Uh forgive if we, you know, this, what we thought about even is having a man in each one of the rooms, that would be very, uh a person there in each one of the rooms. That would be there as people came by, and that we thought, although I I shouldn't put anyone on spot, but you could have anyone sort of doing the tours, including. Uh maybe council, for example, just hypothetically. Uh so you could have donors, you could have people who work on some of the committees and so forth. They may do the tours, we may have our staff, Jed and other people around the building, like uh who better to explain the inner workings of the refrigeration system? And the chamber and so forth, and Mr. Godson, uh you know, John could be out there explaining the community room and the fiction and so forth and so on. Michelle uh in the front lobby, who knows? But the idea is maybe we have uh folks around and stationed who would be very familiar and have a bit of a. You know, a bit of a routine, uh go over, you know, short list of things to mention, and while some was taking folks around in tours. Or if it wasn't just tours, we'd want to guide tour, you'd simply walk around freely, walk up and down, so, yeah, that's, this is just some of the thinking.
Yeah, it will be right on to me for general discussion and I guess path forward to the offerings and. Uh eight P M to ten P M, uh we're gonna have our clock drop for the Husky opener, national anthem to be sung by someone very special in this room. And um. And and yeah, so it's it's gonna be a great home opener for the Huskies, I did communicate with the um with team. Normally they would start around seven thirty, but given the nature of the event and um. We have to be very tight on our timelines because the kids do need to be known at certain time. So that that is Friday, Saturday, uh beginning at nine A M, same same thing, uh for those who can make Friday night open house. Coffee refreshments in the morning, uh with more facility tours, general discussion, um questions, uh recreation discussion about uh winter rec and. And so and and beyond, um that goes from about nine A M to twelve thirty, uh and and obviously in the. The plan is that the canteen will be open for all of those events, so if people wanna come and see our new canteen uh in this, you know. Uh in glory, I guess, and they'll be uh they'll be available. Uh one P M to two thirty P M is the uh bolt's opener. And then we are currently scheduling a C M H A game from three to four thirty that same day, and then following that. Following that, we have our River Valley hockey team playing um from five thirty to six thirty. We're planning, uh recreation is planning a um uh skills competition, something like a um. Uh shooting accuracy and uh passing drills and stuff like that, just something, uh you know, get the, get another one engaged. And then from eight thirty until ten P M, we're gonna be having our lock and skate, and we've uh. Um our local DJ to do that for us against the virtual.
So I mean, some of the things as well, um this said earlier, uh this is an opportunity probably where we're gonna uh meet a lot of the public, and that'll be over the. Certainly the first two days, first three days, and then even beyond, but that's where I need some sign-ups here, we're both have an opportunity to share information about rec programs. As well as on the modification system, now we have a public Wi-Fi system like low threat or something, but here in the arena, the people can offer on that can be advertised. We can have upcoming schedules on our monitors, so it'll be lit and alive in a way, uh looking at the arena and do this, so. It should be a really, and we've talked about even, I don't, anyway, other things we could do and weave into this, promotional items or so forth. Uh draws or fun things that might uh work, but uh in any event, that is the outline though, but it's a pretty uh good outline of the few events. That we're gonna have in the region. And one other thing is that we did initially think of or discuss ribbon cutting, but we thought. Uh ribbon cutting is really for the grand opening, New Year, and we have the dignitaries and all the folks there. So this will be more of a soft opening, and you're all in that way, it won't have as much formality, be more of a welcome in and uh, you know, hang about. Uh for the, for and and with lots of stuff.
If I may, to add that, and we've already been discussing Friday and Saturday, but the facility will be open as scheduled for regular events, regular uh ice rentals and. Walking track use on Sunday and beyond, but these are just some of the highlighted events over the uh first two days of the facility.
Alright, so turning back to the uh and to the outline here. Uh grand opening plan is really very near the stage of planning, and that's something that'll evolve and emerge over the next uh couple of months. Uh so too, the awards and recognition strategy for both contributors and donors, I think of like people working with construction committee, fundraisers and committee. Uh indigenous consultation and so forth, that's all sort of to be developed. Uh but look interior designing room, I don't know if I'll go into too much of that now, other than. One thing I think I've mentioned before is that um what had previously been thought of as a uh an office for staff. We're converting it into sort of a changing room for walking tracks, folks with lockers and benches and things, which is very, I think of the ultimately, you know, very useful. And uh which is really necessary. And so there've been some, uh I don't know, we call it minor change, but there's been some change, some changes like that. Just to enhance the functionality, usability of the facility, and those are all the works, um I won't comment on too much of more of that there. I'll uh, I would say uh on the tech field, um we're putting finished item on security or network. We're gonna have all the private network for the town and the public network for the public, uh using the same connection, but it should work well and it'll work outside the building. So in the summer, uh when we, we're at the pool, we saw the field, the ball fields, you'll be able to log on to our uh public network there. Uh monitors are through the building, intelligent or a network monitors, and so we'll be able to get features in the security system. Uh show uh things uh if we would like uh, you know, off-terminating events like rings to advertise and what have you, so. I'm wondering if something we we were, and just today, I believe it was, we finally put up the scoreboards and we're in the air and visible. And you should walk into the arena and have a look.
First of all, the name, the name's worth it. We're just firing up the case with the, you know, that we have, it's very, uh, easy family. So we're just, uh, planning that and, uh, it looks, it looks great. Yeah, we're really excited.
Yeah, and, and the deputy mayor, I think we have a default setting of Canadians five, leaf zero.
Meaning here is one zero.
That's not, that's not true. I just read that.
I just wanted to say that thanks to Propplem and Community Foundation for their contribution towards the scoreboard.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Nice.
Really good. Yeah. No, excellent. Um, for care, one of those things that, that it's funny, you can think it should have been thought of, but it just. And we just ordered our, uh, cleaning machine and then John was in consultation with Jed as well with other, uh, other centers and see what they use for machines. So I think we ordered a machine, doesn't matter, it's to make the model, but just to say we've. Maybe we ordered a good machine or if we get a secondary one, and that's in place, something with which we'll, you know, walking track. And should work well. Um, recreation equipment, office equipment, all those things are short in progress, uh. I mean, everything from wine shelving. And I, I would say that, uh, when you look at all those things, we have really. Not gone out in a spending spree and just bought all new. We've reused a lot of what we had already, whether it's office equipment. Or exercise and fitness and recreation equipment. So where it made sense and there was no real reason to buy new. We recycled, re-purposed, reused existing. Also because, uh, you know, of course we're, uh, we're trying to save the spirit of that budget. So, um, and, and as I said earlier, the good news, the canteen equipment, we sort of found a solution to the problem, like, and research earlier, so. Uh, and it's coming in, I believe, uh, ready. And we're doing very soon. We receive and we'll get it and should be good for the fifteenth, so.
Hey, that's a lot. Thank you. Good information.
Who, who, um? I think our owls chucked a little bit again.
That could be.
And it wasn't.
The horse, uh, it just can't run off. I think we, uh, I see, I don't know if there'll be enough to disappoint the residents who want to see us and get here, so I think that has to. Go ahead. If that will be tragic for you.
Well, let's, uh, this computer, it isn't the owl.
Just.
They have a long lifespan.
Well, the hammer didn't.
Eagles can live seventy-five years, so lifespan of an owl is.
Very important. Okay. Um, yeah.
So we'll move on to Ivan's eight, two, twenty twenty five operating budgets.
So I will pause along the way again for interjections and modernizations from staff on this. But we'll sort of go through this and this is not, as you might know, what I've done is I've produced a PowerPoint. It is not. I do have a copy of our detailed spreadsheet from the year, but I don't think that's constructed with council, the del too deeply. And so what. Uh, I try to do here is just sort of explain some of the general strategy and principles, considerations there, budget for the equation council and. Uh, we'll go through that. So just as an outline, again, we'll go over some basics and guiding principles, staffing plan. Now, general operating budget, we totally operate by this. So, uh, starting with basics and I may, uh, if this owl isn't working. But the audio is, I trust, uh, I may go to, um, my, oops. Here, yeah. And, uh, through, yeah. So, uh, very basics. Uh, I think everyone here, uh, in council and staff are aware of this. But still there is repeating for those listening online is that you're in a mispanel, you have two budget, operating budget chip. Uh, which are, and again, operating, not capital, they're the general, uh, operating budget, the utility operating budget. These are your ways to talk about the utility. Utility for us, we don't have a power station or a dam. So for us, it's the water and sewer systems from all costs, all revenues and expenses related to that. Are in the utility operating budget and everything else is in the general operating budget. So, um, when we think about in the general operating budget, when you have revenues, your revenues in the general operating budget are predominantly provided by property taxes. And by predominantly, I mean, ninety odd percent of them, uh, there are recreation fees, but when you think about all the work going on, like, we're certainly hoping. And planning and expecting to have a much stronger revenue generated from fees, thanks to the complex. But at the end of the day, the vast majority of revenue will still be driven by property taxes. Uh, with expenses, it's, it's a whole range within staff, police, fire, public works, recreation. R C is the regional service commission, um, Western Valley Regional Service Commission in our case. Uh, administration is, uh, it means recreation waste, uh, or garbage collections, fire. On development, there's environmental development, there's environmental health, environmental health refers to garbage collection, uh, environmental development, or men's, uh, refers to everything around, economic development tourism and so forth. And, uh, and public works, the roads and streets, uh, is not shared. So out of that budget, and we look at the value of, of, uh, transports important for those who are thinking about, um, those who live in former L S Ds, those costs. Are the cost of former L S Ds, you pay forty-one cents to the provincial government and they look after the roads and streets, streetlights, guardrails in your area. Uh, those living in Old Heartland, you pay for those services through your general operating budget. And it is what explains why when you add, uh, the amount that individuals pay, uh, for property taxes in rural areas, plus the forty-one cents, let's just quickly say, let's say seventy cents and forty cents, which gets into a buck ten. The difference between that is transportation, uh, i- it, when Heartland pays a dollar fifty. So there's a forty cents differential there. Um, I'll drill down on that a little bit later to make a little sense of that and treasure my add in. But anyway, that kind of is worth noting. Uh, utility operating, those are, those fees, of course, are only paid by the folks who reside in Old Heartland. Uh, they're the water and sewer bills, connection fees when we, um, when people, uh, put in or, or upgrade housing. And, and what you do is if, if we look at, uh, take Jed as an example, his team. And Tina and her, uh, and, and Jennifer who do billing, we take part of their salaries. And we allocate them to that water and sewer budget as well as the C E Os who has some general oversight. So that's always part of the budgeting process is what percentage. Of, uh, of, uh, you know, Jed's full-time work is, uh, dedicated to, um, and we get part of that by some of the time sheet work we do. We get part of it based on experience and know-how. And of course, all we've done in the past, whatever we've had to do in the past. Uh, so that is a big part of the expenditures we see in the utility and operating, so. So if we go to guiding principles, these are, these are principles that I, uh, sort of recommend. And I think, uh, when I say I recommend, it's also things in the finance and construction committee and others we talk about. So. It pays to use conservative figures for revenues and expenses, especially when facing unknown. So as we think about twenty twenty-five and opening a new complex. We have estimates of how much your thoughts, we do know exactly, more or less, uh, with, you know, uh, interest rates being the, uh, the variable. How much we're gonna pay for the venture, if we're around a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, we think we have an estimate relatively sound, we're certainly hoping for how much it'll cost to for power at the new building, which would be more than the old. We just talked about adding the custodian and three attendants, as well as allocating in a more dedicated way, some people that we've previously losing more flex roles. We can think here, uh, pick on a particular individual, but if we have a recreation maintenance person, that person may have, it may be a larger gravitational pull now for them to work in the, uh, complex. Um, the fair share of the cost of shared services for all residents. So, um, the interesting thing out of amalgamation, I, I'll try and be brief, is that all municipal are trying to figure out. How to adjust the rates in formal L S Ds to account for the fact that they were now responsible, uh, to pay for the shared services that were provided by the. Uh, so the coordinate, so if we think of the services that are provided in general, the one that you can pull off the table is transportation. Because that does not go to Brighton or Somerville or Simon's, your, that belongs exclusively to many people who won't hire them. But that equals roughly, depending on how you allocate the budget, for us, one seven hundred thousand. So if you think, if every cent of the tax is the equal to the forty thousand dollars, you can divide number the other and figure it out. I'm going quickly and being rough here, but about twenty-five cents to get you to, uh, to cover that. So that means there's like a fifteen cent differential. When you think of the dollar ten versus dollar fifty, it's really like dollar forty-two or three versus dollar fifty-three or four, in any event. Uh, that is explained by, um, my differential. So anyways. So when you're looking at this as a council, that's what you've got to yourselves come to conclusion, what is the fair rate that people in formal L S T should pay? Vis a vis, um, you know, the people in Old Heartland. And, uh, that is of course, that calculation is compounded a little. By the fact we have this former agreement, the seven and a half cent agreement, um, but you'll see later on, there's already been substantial increases. In formal L S Ts as a result of amalgamation. So all those things we factored in as we look forward this year. Um, next thing, I think as a general instruction to council, uh, at the end of the day, one of the things that council has to settle on every year is what is the red line for rate increases? That is, like, what is too much, too little? And it really, in some ways, comes down to thinking like, oh, uh, I can see going to one, I'll just pick arbitrary number. I can see you go to seventy-five, but I can't, I, I, we can't cross eight as a threshold, right? Or, you know, a principle is, we really. We wanna keep our month carrier or doing one thousand and spurs to be agree for the sport and not move it, stay below neighboring municipalities. So when we think of user fees, when we think of all the property taxes in both Old Heartland and New Heartland. What is the red line that the council members have individually, men vote on? It says, this is, you know, we've gone too far, we've not gone far enough, or is it under the agree on the settlement? And there, to some extent, I won't call it a gut feel or reaction, but there is part of that component to it. It's not merely a matter of numbers. It's about, uh, landing on figures that you think will be acceptable to the folks who are in for the services. So, uh, the other guiding principle is that you're, you're always in the business of trying to invest, you know, long, for the long-term fiscal health. And that means even when it hurts, trying, making sure that you're still putting something in reserves. I know the treasurer has mentioned, and rightly so. It is very hard to save in such spending years, and we're gonna leave a couple of very hard spending years. That said, it's also a challenge to just completely abandon the plan that had historically has not had adequate reserves, or has had low reserves. Adequate is sort of a normative judgment. And therefore, what's the balance you strike between understanding you're going into a hard spend year? And abandoning your general goal to increase your reserve over time. So that is something you have to keep, you know, top of mind when you're looking at this. Um, I put in here spending to meet standards. And what I mean by that, that's your standard, that's council standards. What I mean by that is that if you look at the downtown, you're pleased with the sidewalks or you're not pleased with the sidewalks. You're pleased with the signs, you're not pleased with the signs. One of the standards say, we've gotta do something about that. It's just kind of that simple in a way, like. One way or the other, we have to make sure some, this is right, that we do these things. And I think as, again, as you're looking at budget, budgets are really the numbers, but they really represent what your values and priorities are. And what is you feel like you want to invest in. So, um, that again is something to keep in mind as you go through. And the other thing I, I looked at, I've said in the past, I've sort of, um, I wouldn't say I've misrepresented, but I've, uh, I went through this year and it occurred to me, I, I, in the past, we said like discretionary spends are like sixty, sixty percent of the budget is non-discretionary. When you really look at a budget and consider for a moment that the, the members of council sitting around this table are not really discretionary spend. Your salaries are non-discretionary. We're going to pay new, they're gonna pay eighty or ninety percent of the staff that they're making now. These are not discretionary. And when you look at it from that perspective, and I have a, you know, table coming up. Our discretionary spending as a percentage of the budget is really tiny. It's like ten percent of the budget. You have like a five hundred thousand dollars spend to play with. Most of the rest of it is out of your hands, or it's either paid to an external party like the police or waste. Or the regional service commission, over which you have no control and no say in what the fee is, or is largely out of your control. And I'll, I have a list here to sort of break that out. Um, so we'll go to the next one. I'll skip through the scaffolding plan. So now we'll look at the general budget in particular and some facts and consideration that can actually shoot. So I just said, ten percent of the general operating budget is truly discretionary, just in part of the K. This year, as we know, we're gonna face major cost increases for the complex. We're at two hundred and fifty K a year. That may not be a perfect figure, but it's in that ballpark, hundred and fifty for debt, and we have staff and power and other miscellaneous besides that. So that's a big hit to our budget. And you can do the math on a five, you know, million dollar budget, that would be five percent. Uh, ours is not, ours is around four point five. So it's, uh, it's a large net increase year-on-year. Um, we have, and I'll have a list of these in the next slide, but there are a number of external services we receive. Police, waste and the, uh, Western Valley Regional Service Commission, which comes in around ten percent of our overall budget, by the way. It may go to something more like eleven or twelve, uh, waste, which comes in nearly double that. And the police, which is a full quarter of our budget, um, in any given year. Um, we've had some heads up on what the increases may be for these things. Um, but there's some generally gonna land year over year. Uh, a one-year increase up between probably between seven and twelve percent and for these high-cost, non-discretionary external services. Um, next year, it's great, uh, the inner pipeline, uh, there's housing developments, uh, two major. Well, I, I maybe I should, even three, uh, look very promising and looks like they'll be shovel-ready by, uh, spring. Or, or summer. Uh, but they don't come without an initial, they're, you pay for those when you put in water and sewer, maybe streets and roads and other things. When those come. So that is part of what you have to come for in this year, in the twenty twenty-five budget. There will be spending. And yes, we will pursue. Uh, till the end of the earth, uh, grants to get those, but grants don't do a hundred in most of, it is a seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, ninety proposition. So if you're talking about big spends like two million dollars, that leaves you with two hundred thousand dollars at cost, you know, if you get the ninety, that's, but just to do simple math. So great thing if we can add a hundred units of housing or whatever that number ends up being in the long term, train pass it. In the short term, something to pay for. And, uh, it, it'll be a thing. And waterfront development, we know about, again, a great thing. Uh, to, to see the boat launch going and things, but there will be, uh, immediate spending as a result of that, which will hit our budget. Um, so the payments for housing development and centers start next year. So again, good thing we had housing development, but we've got that in the past. And I think that we developed an incentive to stay competitive with neighboring municipalities, but we started to pay for that. Uh, capital budgets and I, I, I say this as a general statement, capital budgets and operating budgets, we talking about them separate, but I use the word unbelieve. Maybe two, uh, maybe a little odd of the word, but they're very much like a seesaw. I mean, if you think of a simple example, if you decide not to replace a vehicle and you're spending ten thousand a year repairing. You're probably gonna start to spend eleven, twelve, fifteen, twenty, you're gonna get worse repairs. This is a pattern we're all familiar with and we've seen. And so you're always making trade-offs, uh, between spending on capital budgets to renew, but to seriously upgrade or replace assets. Versus in the fire departments, of course, it's at their front and center of that sort of consideration. Uh, not to mention there are other peripheral things like, you know, our insurance, uh, for businesses in the town being, not blowing up as a result of. Uh, you know, not having equipment that's too old and so forth. But it's seesaw, so you can spend more in the operating budget. Um, you know, when you have to do repairs and replacement or, and water and sewer infrastructure is a big one. So you could. Right now, we're, uh, we're having, uh, an issue with, uh, I think it's our pump. Uh, where we've seen a failure of a bearing and things of this sort and, uh, old equipment, this is what you can expect. And you never know whether it's gonna be a magnitude ten or magnitude five repaired. But you kind of know you're gonna have to deal with that kind of thing so long as you have old aged, you know, uh, equipment that you need to duct tape and nurse along. Get from one year to another. But same token, you cannot afford to just go and buy new everything. So in a budget, you're trying to figure out what's the, again, the right balance between one and the other. And, uh, and what I said earlier kind of speaks to the last point. After you take out transport out of the mix from our budget, you're just left with two shared services. Which are, in one sense, you could perceive or look at as shared, you know, across the whole municipality, former L S Ds and Old Heartland included. You kind of get around a fifteen cent differential at the end of the day and the tax rates between those two. But, uh, there's also, of course, those arguments and, and those points that people might make, that it's a very different thing for someone to have a truly. Uh, the same shared experience of living very remotely in retirement versus somebody who lives right in, in Borup in the summer. And has immediate access to recreation, other, uh, other facilities. So those are all the things you kind of have to weigh, think about and balance as you're looking through the budget. Here's the chart of sort of the non-discretionary, mostly discretionary and like. Pretty much fully discretionary costs. So if you start with the ones in the fire left in red. Uh, police waste, regional service commission, what you have, you have to pay back your debt, cost of assessment different from the province. And I had it in here, emergency repairs to assets. So the thing anyone dreads is, uh, I'll never know if I'm getting a call from Jed, if it's a happy call or a bad call. And his batting average is much lower than most every other staff member, but it's not his fault. He's simply reporting the facts in the background as he, as he encounters them and has to deal with them. So, uh, yeah, but you have a water leak, you know, you have the bearing going. And, uh, okay, what does that look like unless you have to spend? The point in the budget, you're trying to leave money in the budget to deal with this, not knowing that you're gonna get. Ten thousand or fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars of this sort of spending a year and year and how you act with it. Yeah, have something in there. So. So now you're into probability and estimation and that's what you're doing. Terms of the mostly discretionary, non-discretionary, um staffing costs are going to come in around one point one. They're a very similar figure to the police, coincidentally. I don't know if that means something or nothing, but it is at least interesting to think of. Uh council costs are a hundred fifty K, fire two seventy, around there. Um that budget, uh just to be clear, there's debentures that would top that up and add to that. And this is a ballpark in terms of mission progress and keeps in line with what we've seen before. Animal control is something that's a small figure, but um professional services, that's kind of the trinity of legal, accounting and engineering uh that we get. Uh engineering from down in legal from our local council, accounting, where you have a money and you can set it to audit. Uh so those are things every year you're going to pay for. You never know how much legal work you'll have to uh do. But in a year when we're going in and we're thinking we're going to be several uh, you know, housing developments and work. That typically means uh there's some, uh maybe some legal work if we're selling town properties and that kind of thing. And general minimum operations, that's a big ticket item. I didn't put a figure on it. Uh only because it's a little bit harder, or at least in the time and attention I had to it, it was tricky to get the number, but that's a big number. Insurance liability, insurance for the buildings, uh power and heat for all of our buildings, regular maintenance, uh salt and sand in the winter, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, it's a big, it's a big number. Now, you get to the part where this is not play discretionary, but it's like, these are the choices. Now you're down to saying like, okay, after you deal with that, you've got a five hundred thousand dollar roughly sub bucket. You can drill down and figure out what we're going to spend. So here, I, I mentioned the word new is important in front of debentures, but it's not the debentures we already have. It's that anytime you're looking to say, oh, we should get a fire truck, we should get a new loader, we should get a new pickup, we should uh upgrade the park, we should do this and that. If you cannot afford to do that, and most of those things you cannot afford, and we have no um pot of money. So that means you're looking gas tax, you're looking borrow and you're looking at using your own reserves. If you exhaust all those, then you go to new debenture, new borrowing, which we saw last year through the device we picked out, which is a great buy, I think, and will be a great investment for the town. But that's where, so you have new debentures. Every time you take a debenture, you pay it back, you pay it back in five, ten or twenty years. You can do math, you add a little bit of interest on it, you divide it by ten or twenty, you can see what you're going to be paying every year. So great, easy to go out and spend a million dollars, uh over ten years, a hundred thousand dollars a year plus interest. So and that comes off your operating budget, you got to pay it. So that's a hundred thousand dollars less you have to, you have to buy in the town. Uh transfers to reserves, how much do you want to save? It's not unlike an individual say puts in an R S P or a personal savings account, or you know, just rainy day. Uh for us, I don't think it's so much a rainy day as it is uh, it's really for serious, long-term investments in core infrastructure that really need those investments with, you know, that are, are, are just flat out required. Municipal grants, how much do we give grants for education, uh for social activities, for economic activities, for incentives? Recreation programs, the equipment and repairs, the interesting, this is, this is one of the two-sided elements in this discretionary is because if we invest a new recreation program, it could well be that it pays for itself, or that it comes close to paying for itself, or does better than pay for itself. And so in that one, the calculus is a little different because you're saying, okay, if we add this new program, between what we're spending on equipment and power and staff, will we make that back up in revenue? And while you think that, I always say like, when you look at any program, we're here to provide services to the public and you don't have to charge region everyone. At the same token, when we spend dollars to provide services, those dollars come from a finite pot of funding. And if we spend it on A, we cannot then turn around spending on B and C. So it's a zero-sum net loss situation. You are going to have to choose one or the other. So it's very important, and I say with John and the recreation team, we've done a great job looking at our programs and ha- and starting to have this sort of view of it. Is that you always have to know what you're spending. Not only tell me what we think you're going to raise, what's it going to cost? And when you're using your own resources to do it, if you're going to invest ten or fifty or a hundred hours doing this new program, where do we look, what, what, what are the, those ten, what did we do, we used to do for those ten or fifty or a hundred hours that we're not going to do now?
You, you just want us to go home to fresh time, don't you?
No, no, not at all. No, not at all. No, no, just uh informed, hopefully, you know, and, and thoughtful about it. Um staffing, and so I've said to people internally, and I really, I don't just say it to uh, I, I think like as a manager inside the town, one of the most important things you can manage is your time, your own time and your people's time. It's one of the two things we have a little bit of control over. Now, if we get called for a water leak and we have to show up and be there twenty hours, we have to be there twenty hours, there is no discretion. But over the course of a year, when we look at the full set of services that we provide, there are opportunities to do things at different times of the day, to do them over a longer time or shorter time, to use different resources to do them, hard-time people, contractors, et cetera. And while um, you know, it doesn't mean that there's hundreds of tens of thousands of dollars on the table. There's always an opportunity to do things more efficiently, more intelligently, and more cost-effectively um to save money. And that's uh, that's a challenge for everyone, uh CEO and all included to figure, you know, those things out. To go through, park library and tourist bureau upgrades. Um everyone is, we've all sat in on, you know, uh presentations about the library and we know it's an older building. We know there can be sometimes some serious structural issues and all the rest. But again, it's, it's one thing to toss out, oh, we need to do twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs. When you look at the very long list of things you're thinking about, that's a, there's a lot of uh twenty-five thousand, five thousand, fifty thousand dollars that there. At some point, they don't add up and you don't have funds to do all of them, so you got to pick. Roadwork, we always uh, I mean, it's another example of either buying new or, or, or replacing repair, you know, because when we don't pave a street and we choose instead to patch and we're, we're putting off a longer, now maybe fine. Builders are all tough calls though. So how much you put in patching, how much you do new paving? We've had some ability to do some paving recent years, which is great. As you go into tough spend years, that would be a harder stretch, but it's something the finance and construction community have looked at. And we sort of have a game plan for, uh but that is one of the compromised. Beautification, tree planting, um looking after, and we did, I think, I don't know they say here, but like, you know, we talked about downtown core sidewalks. Where are you uh spending that money? Uh, you know, what is the important priority you have to make that? You know, because at the end of the day, you, of course, everyone would want your downtown to be, you know, special and pop and you say the television thing would just be really, it's safe, good, attractive, especially in the town where we have a national store, uh a tourist attraction, you know, right there. So and uh cemeteries, uh marketing communications, that's our newsletters. I mean, one of the things council's talked about before is, is, is having more outreach, outreach and engagement with the public and what's going on. I think we've been very successful doing that. The newsletter's been excellent for that and what have we done on the web and others. But again, it's not, it's not free. So it's, uh when we produce newsletters and distribute them, they come with a cost. But uh, and then the water cost is just as a reminder, it's a little bit of a, not nerdy, but a technical thing. But in every municipality's budget that has a water and sewer system, uh the water, uh, the water, sorry. The water and sewer budget or utility budget gets to charge the general for the sale of water by the fire department. So um we've been going with uh twenty-five thousand recent years, that is a number. I think when I got here, sixty or something like that, it is entirely at our discretion when we set that. I mean, you can make it too low, the province would tell you, you couldn't make it like five bucks, you wouldn't make it fifty. Um it has to be a reasonable number, uh but you know, we, we adjusted it um like to a third last year. Uh simply to balance out both budgets and give ourselves more flexibility and do it in the way we thought it was going to be. So um animal control and biolog enforcement, and that is really matters. Well, you say it's not optional to do that or not do it, but you can certainly do more or less of it, invest more or less in it. And question is, how much do you spend and what type of resource do you hire? Is your contractor, do you hire full-time people? Do you have a shared resource and et cetera? And so forth. So that green, that far-right column in green is really where, when we meet, we discuss visibility, while it's important to understand the greater scope of all the money and the vast majority of money in definitely those two columns, the money that you really have to manage effectively or not. And the decisions you have to make, the choices you have to make about what matters and where your spend is more located in that third column. Now, that's the one where the true discretionary lives. Now, I'm not looking just to drill, this is pretty true. We haven't gotten our property tax uh base information from the province. This is out of a spreadsheet, it's an extract, but what I'd point your attention to is with the um preliminary uh uh budget that we've created, which is, again, uh I think of this as extraordinarily subject to change. We had a, a, a selection of tax rate increases that we can move around, like, and so A, B, C, D uh are all tax rates, so you can either not increase it at all, uh one and a half cents, three and a half cents, four cents. Now, I can, those can be anything we would like, but it's simply so I can quickly and easily see the differentials and percentages, which are in that first table below them. And the bottom line is that what our current budget is premised on here uh for now is a one and a half cent increase in apartment and three and a half cent in former L S Ts. With the exceptions made for Colstream, it feels historically Colstream was really high, it was really low. In the last two years, we've moved them closer to the median. And if we made this specific set of changes, you'll notice in that third adjusted rate twenty twenty-five, or not third, sorry, it'd be one, two, three, fourth, fourth line, that all the former L S Ts are on apartment based tax, they're all at seven, three, five, six. If that's a goal of council, uh that's something to keep, to think about, um whether that would be desirable. Uh and I tend to think it would be. And, and but the bigger point is, is, is three and a half cents the number, is it two and a half, is it four, is it? What, whatever, knowing the five is the other, probably what the province for the second year. Um, and uh, and then you can see that the rates they get down uh to after that. And the actual calculation for sake of budget, we can't, that I use and, and Tina had slightly different figures, but just coincidentally, because we were working to some extent independently. I assume the seven percent and six percent increase in tax base. So tax base is always a combination of just simply having higher assessments due to inflation and other factors. Plus new development that we see in the last year, new houses, new apartments and so forth. So I assume six and seven and five across the board and the others. Uh that wasn't based on any, any special insight or, it's an estimate, it seems to be about what we've had. And that got us to a figure of three point nine million plus our other user fees, which got us a budget of roughly four point three.
So the five thou, five million or close to five million that Michelle has talked about, the permits this year, those become assets that are taxable. Do we have a calculation on what that growth would mean? Is, is that a number that is added to the increased assessment?
Well, if you're in Heartland, it's just a matter of taking that five million divided by a hundred, which gets you to uh five hundred thousand and then multiplying it by one point five, which gets you to about seventy-five thousand. Nothing in my tax assessment or extra tax. Am I, did I do that too quickly or?
But you don't take the whole amount. Probably not. Well, you're, in today's day and age of construction, it's probably costing you more to construct than what your assessed value is, at least in service and grants with assessed value. Uh, and some of those might be residential, some of them might be commercial, I'm not sure if that's factored into the thing.
It is.
But and if it's on our apartments, then you're only going to get one-third of that assessed value in the first year because the province gives the sixty-six percent reduction in these, you know what I mean?
Yes.
There's a lot of factors.
To go and do that.
Overall, no, you're not, it's automatically going to go up five million, um because our permits went up five million.
I know that it's not, this isn't definitive too, but is it Colstream historically pay more because they have streetlights and?
I believe that is the historic explanation, but um it seems like a nominal uh added bonus to differentiate a tax rate that's closer to ten cents uh or higher than most others. So it, it, and we
That's comparable to the rate we in, uh we experience when we live in San Diego, those are benefits we like.
Yeah, in my uh, look, I, I haven't done a full analysis, just to say, it always impressed me when we went through normalization and since we've looked at it ever since. Local level variation among L S Ts, like it's a thirty cent range on factors across the province, which is kind of like it's hard to explain that by streetlights or other things. I mean, it is, I mean, that is
Well, it's going to be hard to explain to people in Brighton why they're paying the same amount as people in Colstream, and we do not have that stuff. That's what I'm saying, like.
No, but it, it's streetlights are into some total of the set of things you're getting, so, which is what I would say. It's like you can't, it, it does not boil down to just that one thing. It is something you consider, but uh there's like what they're really paying for when you're part of the community is this whole larger set of things that they're getting, administration, planning, recreation, fire service, et cetera. That whole pot from the general uh operating budget minus transport. And that's really what you're paying for. And I think the idea with, uh, I know we've said this before, council, but and a lot of municipalities have not done this, but the idea of getting to a harmonized tax for former L S Ts means you're not creating an issue for anyone saying, why is that person paying, why is he, why are they paying? They're the street over for me and you're paying twenty cents less than me. That doesn't make sense. And to which it'd be hard to say, yeah, it does make, actually, you're kind of right. So in our case, um eighty percent of our population in those first two, some, some of them way full of Brighton. And they're on the same tax rate now. And now it's just a matter of maybe making adjustments to get the last two full streaming P O. Even though those are very, also very small populations relative to the other two, but then you're on a harmonized rate. But again, that is a council decision, that is not, you know, for, you know, staff to do. But back to the principle, is that a principle that council values and, and thinks is important to have them move to a harmonized rate? So with taxes, you find two things are at that point. Plus, Old Heartland relative to the former L S Ts, what's the right differential uh between, you know, the rate that Old Heartland is paying versus the folks in the former L S Ts? And fundamentally, that's where I, I, I said, you know, setting a red line or having in, you know, your heart or head what seems to make the most sense about it, or what's right should come down.
And we can get that cost for you to, yeah, you know, the cost of streetlights for
Oh, yeah.
And you'll know.
Um, so if you look at the general operating budget, and this is because uh I don't know how many ones exactly that are in the full budget, but it's a couple hundred, I believe, anyway. And it's a lot. And uh so especially if you're breaking them as we do and we take individual lines and break them on a ten or twelve separate spans. So at a high level, uh what you're looking at here is, and this is year over year. And again, I, I would, I would stress and emphasize that the twenty twenty-five bigger, figures are preliminary. All the big rocks, we do not have values for police and some of really big, and that could, you know, seriously aggressively change what the numbers are. And that's that we try to use concern, I use the high value for the year over year. I hope they're not going to go over eleven in a single year, but that is a hope and not, I know. So in any event, uh that's a K and a W in a limit. So um, I don't know that, but anyway, this is where you're coming in property taxes, have a large increase to the property tax assessments. Uh core funding equalization, it should not be unnoticed that it goes down. Uh that is thanks to the province, um and uh services to other governments. And sale of services, there's an appreciable increase there, you'll notice. That is primarily driven from the complex, from the advertising, the board advertising, to more programmers. And that is seeking to get some uh better return on the thirteen million dollar investment we made. Uh beyond just having obviously the facility and, and for the, there, there hopefully, that'll also uh provide a revenue source for the town uh that's great. And uh conditional transfers and the rest, and you see other transfers, uh some increase uh there and, and other revenue as well. Uh higher, uh looking towards, so I, I should say, over on the right, I do say, it assumes a five to six percent increase in tax assessment. Uh a one point, one and a half cent increase in Old Heartland, a three and a half cent in the former L S Ts. Um assumes no change in the multiplier, major increases in wreck and culture spending. So when I just mentioned that the sale of services will be driven up. Uh of course, that is offset in counterbalance, if you will, by significant increases in recreation spending. Uh mainly targeted at the costs associated for staffing and complex operations. So um there is an actual offset there, if you will, uh that we're hoping to offset it to the basis it's impossible. Um protective, you can see, I mean, the police is the big uh, uh, you know, the, the, the big shoe of fall. For the shoe to drop, I guess. Um, transport up significantly, um, public health is a minor spend and isn't, uh that's actually cemeteries. Uh environmental development, um, again, and those, well, tours and those sort of things, and wreck and culture, then uh high spend there, um, you know, that, that, so. Uh this is preliminary, by the way, I had minus thirty-one last year, it was zero. You're supposed to, all buttons have to balance to zero. I just got it in the ballpark for so many things that follow. I didn't fuss too much about getting it to a perfect zero, which I could just affect thirty-one from one line and somewhere, but in any way. Uh it's in the ballpark. So the real work and, and fun, you know, discoveries are ahead. Hopefully it'll be positive and there'll be a little more room and it's the move through the budget. Um, so back here, um, whoops. Now we'll go to the utility operating budget again, that's water and sewer and the fees uh that are there, and this is only for Old Heartland. So um, and uh treasurer probably commented this earlier, twenty twenty-four, we are trending with deficit, but that's due to some, I think, anomalies, uh not, one of them is anomaly, one of them is not anomaly. Billing adjustments, we had a correction we made with one particular um customer. And that was a fairly substantial one, in which we just, we had a misreading on um uh meter reading and uh we found out that that was, there was a bit of a history to that and that we made a correction made good and came forward with that and uh we're, we're above board and direct about fixing that. And that's, that was a good thing, but it did mean that we got a bit of a hit to our budget this year. Uh we are seeing a trend in lower usage on meter readings. Uh we don't know if that'll continue or not, but it is something that we have to be aware of. Um, and uh, we have prior Um, and uh, we have prior rate decreases. So. Uh, the discounts that we need applied to apartments and we've all started that has, you know, obviously suppressed or. Uh, some of the funding that we would have gotten the revenue side and the authority budget.
Yeah, it was intentional.
It was intentional. And it was, it served a, a purpose. I'm well talking about that when we compare rates in a minute, where. Um. We are anticipating this is important when major spends maintain and update uh, or upgrade. Core infrastructure and expand our system for housing development. So. Uh, as an example of that, recently we're down there now, our committee that we put in occurred. Now, I think that they may have done that in the past, but it did as well. It's not entirely new, but nevertheless, it's a hundred thousand dollars spend that was not actively on the table for, as it is now. Um, there's also consideration in putting in a new well or upgrading existing wells, which may not be technically feasible. Uh, but that is not a, uh, that's not a small ticket item. That's a very bunch of big ticket item with big spend. Uh, the good news is, good news a bit is that. Because a lot of our water and sewer investments should be made from next year or two can be tied to housing development. It does make them eligible for our disease funding. But it still leaves as if we're talking about spending hundreds of thousands, high hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. Uh, there's a lot of money that's left around as tool ultimately made. So. Not to make anyone fearful or upset, just to say that that's all, that's just, uh, that is life. And that is what we're, what's in front of us. Um. What, one thing that this does mean though is knowing that um. And this is not like every town, I think there is a municipality in the province and probably in Canada. And most of the first world that isn't dealing with infrastructure that's fifty, a hundred or more years old and that. Is way beyond its useful life and is breaking and deteriorating, needs repair and replacement. So. What this means and one thing we have done in this budget, not contrary to something said earlier, but in the water and sewer budget. We are allocating more to go into reserves this year than we had in the past. Uh, because we need to save up to make these investments to cover off even, I mean. If we should be fortunate to get a grant that covers ninety percent, but the bill is a million, it's a hundred thousand dollars and you need the reserves. That money has to come from somewhere. It only makes sense to build up the reserves to do that. That is to save money, put it in reserve. So if Jed comes and says, we've got to, uh. There's no choice now. We have to build a second well, the third well, actually, um. Then okay, uh, part of the way you pay for that is to have reserves that help you pay that cost. So in this budget, we're trying to allocate more for that. Uh, it all is also important to note that when we think about user fees. Most of our growth in housing will be in apartments. And the rate you set in apartments then matters. Because if we have, you know, the apartments that we are aware of in our pipeline and four bill housing, the supplemental. Uh, Beltier and you know, town houses, uh, the Durin project, you know, those are apartments. So your apartment rate is what matters. They are not your residential rate, your housing rate. Uh, so when you're thinking about our rates and what we do, what we should do with them, that is, should be top of mind. That it is probably three quarters of the housing we will see developed in the next, you know, foreseeable future. Will not be single dwelling detached houses. They will be apartments. And so your apartment rate is what matters when you're thinking about sending rates. Um, future uh, town suggests that targeted rate adjustment to adapt to these trends and issues that. Treasurer probably has been working on this and has provided some preliminary numbers, but again, this is something that probably if we have a subsequent meeting in finance and infrastructure. We'll drive it in and want to get to a number that, you know, I don't say it's comfortable, but is the one we would likely recommend to council next month. Uh, Dylan is recommended. I I mentioned this in the curtains of the game. And Dylan, Dylan noted that well one cannot support peak demand. Now that not made to cause alarm, we have two wells in the town. The issue is the second one does not run twenty four seven, three hundred sixty five weeks on days a year. So when they do their calculations, they're wholly depending on just based on what well one's capacity is. And if you look at it from that perspective, well, one can cover all the peak demand that we have. Well, two supplemented, but there is a period of time. And L T is right down here, uh, when that doesn't operate. So. At those points, if we should happen to run into peak demand, then it puts a real strain on your system. So we haven't come to any answers to what exactly is the best way to deal with that, but. It's something we're aware of and we have to think that and plan for is what do you do with that? So. There is that. Uh, this is a preliminary view and I don't know that it bears a lot of, or it makes uh, sense to do a lot of drill down on this. Except to say, I point out a couple of things. Um. If you look at this line, the bold twenty two versus sixty six, uh, that is our surplus. So part of the bonus of. Uh, of having surpluses instead of deficits is that it contributes to your revenue and not your expenditures in future years. So. If we should be unfortunate and sort of land in deficit side of the equation with our, our, our um. Water and sewer this year, it means that instead of being in the expenditure column, giving us more funding, you know, being the expenditure column and we'll have less. Um, you also noticed there, what I spoke of earlier is for fiscal for transfers. Um, those transfers, uh, uh, the majority of those are transfers reserves and it's going from basically fifty to a hundred doubling. Basically, what I was just saying a moment ago, is it making a uh, a greater appeal? And the revenues at top line, which I'm going out of order here, but. Are up because we're um, sort of saying that given again, what we're talking about in future years and the investment required and repair and maintenance. And just to plot a form broadly speaking. What we can anticipate is that we're going to have more repair and maintenance coming out of our operating budget each and every year for things like the well and the bu. The busted bearing and whatnot. And we're going to have to do major capital repair or replacements and as well, which has been on the reserves. Uh, gas tax or borrowing. Or other uh, capital that we should have. So um. In order to deal with that, you're, how do we get more? We're going to have to be good about trying to, you know. Say, you know, we're packing nuts, we're against the total metaphor squirrels. And then you know, uh, we have to save, you know, money. And uh, we have to increase our revenue, boost our revenue slightly to deal with that, you know, so. If we hop over, go to the next page. And this is where um, we have a couple of references and treasurer helped to prepare this. She went back to twenty nineteen and just looked at the historic user fee rates that we've had. You can see we basically, if you go all the way from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty four, we increased a hundred dollars. It is worth noting, say a hundred during that time, I do not have to hear the rate of inflation, but I can imagine naturally. We're probably very close to what, to having a flat increase if you factor in the inflation we've seen over the last like century, which. Uh, pre-COVID and COVID and so forth. So. Uh, in other words, like while they say, oh, that's where up under, yes, but there's quite a bit of inflation during that period of time. Certainly inflation in your own budget from the services we've been charged by, uh, you know, God bless Russian Valley and the police and so. Which have been at times double digit year over year. Uh, so in a single year. So. Here we have, um, and and. We have our historic rates and then alongside that, uh, for the change, we have twenty twenty five. And what I did here is put in two numbers. So why the two point five and five? Two point five applies to residential. Five applies to apartments where there's a little bit more of a bump. But still fairly, that's a five percent bump. That's pretty modest, uh, I would say, in most contexts. And that gets you from six ninety five to seven twelve and from four seventy five to four ninety eight. Then if we look over in the fire column of meter down, we're down to less than ten, ten customers, I think on meters right now. Most of them commercial or apartments. Uh, there we're looking at, but it's an important part of our revenue, to be clear. It's a very important part of revenue. So there actually, uh, we're looking at more of the five percent with them, or sorry, uh. Yes, the uh, five and ten percent increase is from twenty seven. Uh, you're dealing with like point zeros here, you know, big fractions there, but going from twenty seven to thirty and then or to thirty three. And if you look in, in, it is useful to instructively look by comparison here. One of our neighbors in in Woodstock is a. Uh, as we know down here, District Crown North only has uh, some water and some sewer rates, so does not offer sewer, sorry, what is it? It does not offer water.
There's, there's a lot about, about sewers and some of the chlorangeal water and sewers.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thanks for that clarification. So yeah, they don't have it across the board. Uh, it's patchy or whatever you might characterize it as. So in Woodstock, of course, every three year, they had some pretty substantial adjustments to their rates uh, in a similar year. Uh, which I happened to experience directly. And in any event, um. They're at seven twenty five. And I think that's before, this is this year's seven twenty five, correct? So we don't know yet what they're planning on doing with that seven twenty. I don't think they've announced that. But anyway, right now they're seven twenty five. And but that's the lowest rate. It goes all the way up to nine twenty five and depends on new customers start at seven twenty five and based on your situation or. Uh, your case, so you can pay as much as nine twenty five. Now it is instructive to note that in Woodstock, uh, their apartments, they, they're. They curiously did the same thing that we had talked or that we did do, sorry, in fact. Is that they cut the rates almost in half from their um, for apartments and they are holding on that for now. Uh, so there is a differential there, but you'll notice their commercial rates are uh, set rate is really much higher than I'm sure, you know, that provides. At least by reference, uh, there's a lot of space between our and theirs, uh, three, over two and a half, three hundred and twenty five dollars. So um, yeah, nearly double. You know, and what we have. So, um. We haven't come to a hard, I mean, I, I think it would be fair to say that we're sort of leaning toward recommending. Two and a half and five or five and one of those certain rates is probably where we'll be, uh. But that's something we've made, I think we'll plan to discuss for a year of that meeting, turning up complaints and infrastructure. Yeah.
One thing we did take into account. Uh, water and sewer is based more on uh, what you would call construction inflation.
Yeah.
Rates versus uh, your pure food and groceries, gas type of instruction. Um, as of this year, four point two percent is the average construction inflation rate. So. For us to even keep par with the, the costs of rates that we may have. Uh, you're more into that rate versus the. Two percent rate that we're currently seeing for commercial or consumer inflation, I should say. And we do have a lot of development coming.
And I, I'm unanimous, I'd redress because there's one point I didn't make that for, that sort of make when we look at, I'll go all the way back to staffing plan. Last year in the plan, we did have the addition, actually did hire one point eight, an extra person in public works. We had talked about, and it's been recommended by other people that we should hire a fragment clerk. And that's supplements for what we have now. And we've talked in the past about getting um, another person for accounting. Not so much because it would mean that the person who now helps with accounting might be repurposed to do other work. But none of those things are in the preliminary budget, none of those positions. The only net adds right now. Uh, are those that we mentioned, the extra person, the three part time workers. Now, I don't set up any happiness or any. Uh, but it's simply a function of the fact that the budget is really tight this year. We're going, as I said earlier, in the year, real unknowns would be, and rather than stretch or reach. Uh, this year, uh, we kind of baton down the hatches and we try to make do with this sort of where we are in as best we can. And uh, you know, worst case scenario, you may revisit this during the year and you, you adjust and accommodate, but. Um, for now, from a budget perspective, you don't plan. Uh, to add those resources. So not a call I make with any enthusiasm. But I think it's the prudent uh, call at this point is, is take that approach. So just as a note, and I didn't mention expressly uh, earlier. So uh, that is it uh, for the goal of the budget. And. I have a spreadsheet, which I will not argue with, which is like got a lot of lines and a lot of cells and details and formulas and facts and figures, but. Um. That is sort of the preview. And as you get down to that, realistically, council probably doesn't like. Finance, infrastructure community may get down to the line level, but we get to in the budget where we look at how much to help them, you know, you pay for. You just named everything, uniformly clothing and allowances to telecom to union. But the overall arc of it is that. And the final thing I'd say, just a bit to counter Brittany's point is that. Uh, I do not meant to, this is not a, a, a great slide sort of presentation, if you will. It's just trying to lay out sort of the set of things that, that you have to sort of count for, literally account for in the budget. But the longer term prospects is that should the housing go forward? And we get that housing, that's a great thing for the future and that will drive revenue in the budget. Um. I don't know the fate of the Brighton Mountain Wind farm, but if that were coming fruition again. That's revenue coming to the budget and the larger trends are good. But twenty five and twenty six are probably going to be years where austerity comes up from time to time. And where you have to sort of knuckle down and, and be fairly discriminant and conservative in how you manage the budget. But the longer term prospects should not be looked at in favor of anyone listening. It's a good new story and the things we're developing, like. I don't think Hartman will regret having a complex and not regret having a park and if we have a water tunnel development. That will not be, those are the things that are much loved and appreciated and used. And benefit the town and helps spur further growth. So, but twenty twenty five is a year where we just have to be pretty disciplined. So that, that's it.
We're sweating now to make it rosy for the next council. Well, that's good.
Well, it's important work that we're doing, like we are setting up for. What will be more prosperous, but you have to pay to get that. I think we've realized that.
Paying for long term gain.
Right. We're all hoping to create the same rate it takes to maintain what we have and to make, and to improve things, so.
You cannot pick the flower until you plant. Oh, that's profound.
Yeah.
I think it's a really positive fact.
And the other, yeah, and the other thing is like we, there is a, we're in a historic housing boom. In a population growth, growth boom. And this is a position we have to be able to take advantage of. And to invite people, welcome people to live here, empower the community and pay your taxes and contribute to it and make moves. So we have the whole like. The golf course, the hospital, the community complex, the school, uh, the new housing, these are all positive things. We just have to.
Now you're trying to make me think.
No, this is all true. So I am, but that's this one.
Okay, that's a lot of information. Does anyone have a question or two for our C A M?
I think it was explained quite.
I think it was, but.
I think Captain Smith and I are the same uh, for, for Council Fairgrounds of the Rendition of the Rose. Now.
Okay.
At the sea, no.
I remind on our agenda is uh, we have one of our next meetings. The number twelve is our regular council meeting and the number twenty six is a committee of the whole meeting.
I move to adjourn. I've been reset.